At this time, we'll call the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie, our supervisors. Luann is our administrative assistant. Lisa and Bjorn from the auditor's office. Good morning. And the first item on the agenda today is Todd Kenny, our interim county engineer. Good morning.
Good morning.
So did you get a hole in one yesterday?
I did that. Yeah, it was.
Probably would've got a prize.
I didn't get it. No, I I didn't shoot too bad. I had five birdies, but I had like, I was eight over three other holes, so. Kind of a mixed bag.
You gotta keep your crooked numbers out of it.
Yeah. So. One, I guess, item of business really for the board is entrance permit for Andrew Megan Kilburg. I did, this is kind of the first time I really looked over your permit. I'd like to. It's it's good that you guys do your site distance checks and they write the distance measured on right on the permit, so that was good. As far as the the permit, I mean, we charge the same hundred dollars in Cook County. Your safety slopes are a little bit different, but. I I mean, if that works for you, I I guess I would. I guess I'm reviewing the permit. The form of the permit as I'm reviewing the permit, but I don't really see too many things that really look like they really need to be changed, so. We we typically allow wider driveway, like we had to go, I think, out to seventy feet of the max width. Yours solicited at thirty-five, but if people are pushing you for wider driveways, then you don't build, don't have to build.
I can see that happening, you know, with the equipment, the way the way it is, and everybody's going in there, in the driveway with a semi anymore. It's drying up, you know, they're not loading on the road or anything.
Yeah, that's their point was like, if you don't want to slow down the road with the auger wagon, build a driveway so we can swing in. Really, they almost park in the driveway.
I didn't know we had a restriction on it.
There's a width of max width thirty-five, but I don't know how well that's.
Yeah.
You guys don't build them, so as soon as you issue the permit, if it gets built at forty or forty-five, who, I mean, I don't. I don't necessarily think that's police, and we don't really police it. Once we issue the permit, it is what it is. Unless there's some maintenance issue thing, like they build it too high where there's runoff from the driveway, like they have it humped up or something, but it's usually not not an issue, so. That's it.
Well, we need to, I would move to approve that permit.
A motion and a second to approve the entrance permit for Andrew and Megan Kilburg. All those in favor?
Right.
I motion here.
Two other things I wanted to discuss real quick on the destination light policy. Probably either next meeting or meeting after that, I will come with proposed policy. Identifies the locations and proposed initial cost for those. Smarter saying REC does not build those. A lion will build those at no cost or minimal cost depending on the type of post. So if you're outside the clear zone, you can just use a regular wood post. If you're in the clear zone, then you have a, you need a concrete base, breakaway post, mast arm, luminaire, all that stuff, so. We'll get an idea of which one is going to require which type and then a cost, and then once we have all that itemized out, that's what I'll come to the board. You guys can kind of discuss how you want to do that. It'll be, I guess, part of an ARP request, I guess, I don't know, anyway.
Are they sending us some more?
They may, I don't know. The other thing we got going on today is Eric Surata was the Officer Bridges and Structures at the DOT is here. He does it all over the county as part of the NBIS requirements for the the federal federal bridge inspection program requirements. He's here, gonna do an audit of the bridge inspections in Jackson County. So I'm leaving here two minutes after we get done and we're gonna go meet him. Basically, today, what he's gonna do is he's gonna inspect six bridges. He's gonna compare what he rates for the sub, super deck, all that with what we rate. See if there's any discrepancies and kind of just, it's really there to. It's an audit, but he's really there to make sure and help us to make sure we're we're getting things done that we need to get done. He's already done like what I call a desktop review of the records, so he can see all of our records through the the SIMS portal. So like our low ratings, documentation of pictures, channel section, scour emails, all that stuff he can see. So some things we need to address from the desktop review too, but we'll talk about all that after we do the actual field inspection on the on the out in the field on the bridges, so.
I've got a lot of good comments about the intersection lighting. People are really hoping that we do that.
Well, all it takes is money.
Yeah, I know.
So anyway, it, like I said, that is coming up. I just want to make sure I got hopefully most of the questions answered, so. We're just talking about what we want to do, not necessarily how we want to do it, so.
So that bridge we visited with the with the perspective of employees, that's due, is it next year?
Yes.
But that's already left, right?
That one is not left, that's state labor.
Okay, so you can't switch something up if you think that was something that we can.
If there's a change in.
Yeah.
You know.
If there's something worse or something more prioritized that we should work on.
So you can not, you can like put that project at hold and do another one, yes, as long as it's on your fiber program.
Okay.
So as long as the project is on your fiber pro- fiber program in your accomplishment year. So like in twenty-twenty-three, you can do whatever project you want. If you got one from twenty-twenty-four, all you have to do is do a resolution, advance it into twenty-three, you can work on it.
Okay, so I know you had talked about a couple different things about that one, and you were underneath pounding on it, whatever you were doing, I don't. Oh, but.
You said it with my head.
I mean, you had some comments about it, maybe maybe if there's something with more priority, maybe we should look at that.
Well, it's it it. So they rated it one way, I rated it another way. It basically was not legal for the type of truck it's rated at. I think it was posted at twenty or twenty-two. So when they did one posting for all trucks, too late, so my point was, well. That's the most conservative way to rate it and post it. There's another option where you could post it as a single lane bridge, meaning one truck on the bridge at a time. Basically, then it would rate legal for for all trucks.
That was my point.
So.
If it's legal, if we put a sign up.
Well, it's legal, but it's only one truck at a time, and like I said, I would. The only thing I would caution the board about doing that is you need to only do it on a gravel road and make sure it's a narrower bridge. You know, if the bridge is thirty foot wide, I would not post it one, because you technically could have trucks. That bridge is a little more narrow.
Yeah, this definitely was. I mean, when I read in the paper that two semis hit mirrors on the Canton Bridge, what? That was made for two trucks.
Yeah, it was.
You know, but you know, I mean, these things on these semis anymore are just far away from the truck, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not gonna cross that bridge with two trucks at one time.
Right, so it really, the only advantage of doing that is you you don't limit people from driving loaded trucks across it one at a time. It's still a posted bridge, and and since it's gonna show as a late a posting, instead of tons, it's gonna show as a single lane bridge. So it's still technically a posted bridge. It just allows the traveling public to take a loaded truck across it one at a time, basically.
Which is substantial, I think, maybe.
Yeah, that's the advantage of doing it. You know, like I said, it's still a bridge that needs to be replaced, because it's not legal, it's still posted, but it doesn't restrict. You know, a s- a a single truck loaded to pass it, yeah.
Um, one other question. I've seen somewhere in the calendar or somewhere, is Sam gonna be here on the thirtieth or third intersection?
Yes, yep. It's on our agenda for next week.
Oh, yep, it is.
Well, he's coming next week.
What our tentative agenda for next week says. At ten-thirty next Tuesday.
And were we invited to that or just?
It's gonna be at our board meeting.
I hear that's ten AM, is it ten-thirty?
Mine says ten-thirty.
Okay, so that's here, that's not out at the site.
That's here. It's also Jayden's first day.
Yeah.
What?
Jayden's first day. That is the three.
Oh.
His week, his last week is this, what's today, twenty-third?
Today is the twenty-third.
They're by the right spot.
Where are you at the right?
Definitely. All right, that's all I have, so I'll be out and about, and then we'll get back hopefully around noon. Sit down and talk about what we needed to. We have to send in a reply to his NBIS metrics where we don't comply, and then hopefully it's kind of like a. A continuous improvement thing. We fix these things and they do, I think it's every, I forget how many years, they do an audit every so many years, and then, you know, how audits go. They always find something, those standard auditors, usually kind of leave some low hanging fruit for them to grab onto, and they don't get too detailed after that.
I just want to wish one of your employees here to a quick recovery. I heard, I spoke to somebody yesterday, and he, Thursday, he gave his son a kidney, so.
Oh, I don't even know about that.
I thought that was pretty commendable.
Yep.
Oh, absolutely. But he looked good, he was out on the road, having this bump in Jonesville.
We're probably open.
Amen.
We got some retirements coming up too. The Cook County. It does make sense. All right, that's all I have.
All right.
All right, thanks.
What's the second name? Do you, at this angle, I can't see.
Oh, I didn't leave him.
Don.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any visitors or citizens that are wishing to address the board? If not, next item on our agenda is Stephanie Sakers, Executive Director for Limestone Bless RC and D.
Oh, new title.
Hello.
Good morning. Well, thank you for allowing me this time to reintroduce myself, I guess, so. I am Stephanie Sakers. I am the new Executive Director of Limestone Bless RC and D as of April twenty-fifth. And thank you. And thank you for your support for our organization. Thank you to Supervisor Willie for his support and being on our board. Appreciate that. I just wanted to put those out there that don't know me. I don't know that there's that many, but anyway. I am a Jackson County native. I currently live in Macau. My husband and I own a small business, have for quite some time here in Macau. I have a background in community and economic development. I've held positions with the Quad City Chamber, Jackson County Economic Alliance, and the Dwych Chamber and Development Company. We have four adult children and two grandchildren, and during my free time, I like to visit family and volunteer and just enjoy nature, so there's a little bit about me. And what I do for Limestone Bless, basically, we're a catalyst for communities to leverage their resources and achieve their goals. So we can provide outreach and help identify resources. We can do grant writing, administer grants. We can also be a fiscal sponsor for agencies that are or organizations that are looking to apply for grants. And then right now, what I'm doing is kind of going out and meeting partners and visiting our boards of supervisors, and everybody's been very amicable. Appreciate that. And you're probably aware, Larry is the Chair of the Macau River Watershed Management Authority, which is a big project that we've been involved in since two thousand seventeen, probably before, but before.
Quite a bit before.
Yeah. And, yes, yes, I was quite reading through that, the process, so, yeah, so it's amazing. And we have an amazing coordinator, Aaron Erickson, who oversees that, so very fortunate. Right now, I'm working on some updates of maps and new maps for the Freedom Rocks and memorials, Veterans Memorials in our Six County region. And we just finished up with a grant that we had for the Dubuque County Food Policy Council. Allowed us to contract with two planners to help them do some five-year strategy plan and so much more deliverables for them. So that's one of my pet projects. I've had some discussions here in Jackson County with individuals who are really looking to do more with local foods, farmers markets. More of a regional effort, so. One of my, one of my goals in the future. We just had our board meetings, so we've done some brainstorming, but we'll continue that type of things that we want to accomplish. And our regular board meetings are Thursdays at six PM. Right now, they're via Zoom, but our annual meeting could be coming up in September, and that will be in person, so. This is my official invite, and there'll be more information Jack will have, so I'd love to hear suggestions from you, so reach out to me if you have any questions or. Concerns or ideas, so thank you for allowing me to come take your time.
We're very pleased that you're on board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate your work you're doing, what you've done in the past, so.
All a good experience for what we're doing now.
Well, thank you.
Good luck.
I'm looking forward to what you do.
Yeah. Okay, Bruce, I think I saw Mike go down the hallway. I saw him go by. I don't know if he's setting out there or.
Sorry.
Apparently.
Are we up now?
Yep. This time we'll be joined by Mike Griffin and Bruce Fisher, Jackson County Energy District.
This is for your. You only have two copies.
I was waiting on.
Yeah, I saw you go that way. I thought you were on your way out already. Luann, do you want to make another copy of this for for Mary?
So this is the application that's now been completed for the WPPI Energy Efficiency Project. John Hanson was very helpful and completely required contact information for all of his engineers, which was the main kind of thing we needed to get added to it. In addition, Lisa found a couple areas of correction for me to make on that application, which have been made. One was we had referred to it as the Emergency Response Center instead of Emergency Operations Center. So we wanted to clarify that language, I try, and even maybe more interesting and importantly is the, I had the address wrong. I had somehow gotten a Jacobson Drive address off of the newspaper and used that, but she had corrected it to Maple Street address now. So I believe everything's accurate there. With your approval and signature, we will then submit it immediately to WPPI. I don't know what their turnaround time is for that kind of an effort, but I would expect to hear back from them in a couple of weeks. So that that part of the project's moving, or part of our process is moving.
And what was the amount on this grant?
Uh, this would be up to thirty-five thousand dollars. This is now independent of the solar initiative, though. This is strictly for energy efficiency work, both from that money could be used for design revisions and or actual materials and labor to implement the ideas that they might identify and present to us. John is is not, I would say, going to be receptive to lots of ideas that are going to fundamentally change the design of the building. He's he's identified that, you know, they're farther along in this process of what probably would have been ideal. At the same time, though, he says, let's go give it a try, and he's willing to work with us on it, so I, I thought he was kind of a good soldier, knowing it's gonna make more work than anybody would.
Well, I think we certainly have to be careful about changes.
Absolutely.
You know, but they, because every change you make. Is just. Comes with the tag, yeah.
Yeah.
But in the long run, if we can do this and save money, that's.
Perfect. Correct, and any time and money that would be required, the grant will pay for it. I see actually not a grant, but the 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 program will pay for it. So it's important to do it now. On paper, instead of. Correct, yes.
Big, big difference.
Yep. So, you know, again, with your approval and signature, we move forward. We just need one copy returned to us with the signature.
Okay.
And we make motion to have Jack sign a contract.
I would second.
Motion and a second to authorize the Chair to sign. All those in favor?
All right.
I motion here.
As long as we're here, I could spend another minute updating the other grant work we're working on. We have completed those app, well, we've completed two applications, both of which, though, I've been advised not to submit yet to the granting authority, because it's too far out for the actual build. They're recommending for us to receive a kind of a preferred response to six months. So we need to, I think, back off from submitting. They didn't prohibit us from doing so, but she discouraged us and says it's 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 not gonna look good for you to do it and not get it, and then submitted again a year or six months later. So our advice to you all is to, I I guess, have us wait and keep you informed of the process and be informed about when you think the roof will be done. And at that point, you know, we could then, once we have a reasonable timeframe, back off from six months and, you know, give us an idea. Probably best case, I think it sounds like it'd be June or July next year for us to submit it, because my understanding was the building was gonna be completed or somewhat close to complete by the end of next year. Assuming that still stands, that's the timeframe we're looking at.
We hope so.
And on this grant, we've we've got a real high chance to get. If we do everything right.
It's almost a hundred percent. I I I, you know, if that's the information you're getting or required, the, you know, when to submit it. I'm okay with that, but that puts us back not to know if we're going forward. If we don't get the grant, are we going forward, dah dah dah, you know what I mean?
But I I fully understand and appreciate that, and I. It's gonna be an inconvenient timeframe versus your budgeting timeframe.
Amen.
The only kind of potential solution I might have, and I don't know if you can do things like this, but would be to approve the budget pending receipt of grant money. If you can make that kind of a contingency, then you're not obligated to do it if you don't get the grant money, and at the same time, we've been assured we're gonna give the grant.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, I mean, we're not talking about that many. Yeah. Budget for it. Basically, budget for it.
The full amount, you mean, and then you, well, whatever we needed to, and then roll it over if it didn't happen or whatever.
Okay, that's that's however you guys want to work it. I knew it was gonna be a bit of a inconvenience for you all, so I appreciate it.
I mean, I I I respect the fact that they they're telling you when to apply, what's your best chance, dah dah dah, but if we don't know it going forward.
Right.
And and all of a sudden, three months before it's done, oh, yeah, then you got the money. Well, that's great, but if we don't get the money, we gotta be prepared for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My, I'll say assurance is that we're gonna get the twenty-five thousand, and that we're gonna get more than that. There are two other grants we're gonna get, one of which is specifically targeted for emergency operations. So this grant is perfectly written for that one. That's a ten thousand dollar grant, so I, you know, you're gonna get more than what I think we suggested initially.
That's good news.
So when do you think that, before July first or after July first of twenty-twenty-three?
Six months back off from when the building is gonna be concluded. Or at least when the contractor says we can get on the roof and put in the solar. Maybe the whole building doesn't need to be done by by then, I don't know.
Yeah, I would say the structure is gonna be up intact and and permanently in place, and then there's a lot of insight work that tends to be completed, be it doors, be it what.
And we could probably be on the roof during that time.
Yeah, I would venture to say so, that it has to be okay by then for the architect or.
Yep.
Whatever. That's probably springtime. The roof would go on.
Oh, first we gotta get wall, first we gotta get footing.
Do you think?
I can't remember anybody put a roof on.
Well, then they could just lift it up a little time.
But but you think that's how they fill their harbors there, they put the roof on it, but. Potentially, the roof could be, the the shell could be done by the by spring.
Well, we're supposed to get, we're supposed to get precast, you know, precast in December.
Yeah.
And he's talking putting in walls to.
Hopefully, I would hope, and we emphasized to him last week or week before that we would like to see some action. We'd like to get the puddings in, so they're set. You know, cleared, so if we do get things in in November, I mean, okay, and with the cranes and whatnot, they work in miserable weather.
Well, that's encouraging, that we could potentially maybe submit before, wouldn't you budget?
Huh?
Wouldn't you?
We budgeted November.
Well, we started working.
We started.
Yeah.
You you know, we'll start talking.
March fifteenth, we have to have our budget again for the next year to the state.
Okay.
But I think that, when I, that was what was in my mind, is trying to, when was this gonna happen and thinking about budgets and such? That's why, and how much, you know, BMO is a dollar, how much, what's what's the dollar amounts?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we have those those amounts now, and I don't remember, I think it's. I don't remember what it is off the mind, but it was like sixty thousand for you guys, maybe, and then twenty-five on top, something like that.
We'll be in contact, have that, so let's talk.
But that's encouraging, but we could then maybe submit it yet this year.
I I guess we'll keep, we'll keep playing this off the next month or two. We're in close contact here, so if we see something happening and we can hear from John that precast is coming in early December. When do you expect to have the roof on? But, you know, just kind of motion predictions per se, yep. You know, pending weather, whatever it might be, you might get a vortex, and then they're all done.
Well, that's encouraging, though.
Yeah.
That's helpful, so thank you for that.
Okay.
And the other thing is, we'd really like to thank Luann. She got things rolling for us. We were having a little trouble with John, and she she wrote him a letter.
Right away, she, he listens to her.
John, John's got a lot going on.
He does.
Well, we know.
He lost, he lost one of his workers, and he's, so, yeah, John's got some situations going on, so.
Well, once he heard from Luann, he was right on it, and he may not even know it was me calling, even emailing you, you know, kind of thing, so. He's he's been helpful this year.
Appreciate it, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good day, gentlemen.
You can't, you have a bad one today, mate.
This is a sign.
Do you want to go yet, since Becky's not here?
I'm sure, I can do that.
Or can we call Becky and see?
Yeah.
Hi, we're ready for you if you can come down. Okay. Be right here.
Yeah. Again, I reviewed that. I just wanted to make sure everyone gets something, so I did notice those.
Good catches, yeah.
Fun to be tweaked.
I mean, a lot of times it's easy to.
Them things over.
Well, I didn't want to make her look like we were moving. And trying to get everything else lined up.
Them are good catches when they're, when you skin them things, it's kind of automatic.
Yeah, especially if somebody's a second. Unfortunately, I look a lot. Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Do you need time?
No, I just have. I was rolling down the highway in Germany one time, semi, on a narrow road. And we did them on your things. Thank God I had my window rolled up, that went like an explosion going out next to you.
I've done that before. That Savannah Bridge was good for that.
Oh, that was, that was wicked.
Now, there's no room on that bridge.
No.
And these trucks, you know, they're getting wider and wider. I mean, they ain't wider and wider, but they're to the limit, you know.
Yeah.
Well, you take an eight-foot truck with mirrors on it.
I called Becky, and she's on her way down.
Okay. Today's the first day of school, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
Time to be careful.
Yeah.
Down. I'll tell you, you don't want to have to go between eight and eight fifteen at the corner of Eddie Place and Andy Street. I go up to Erie and down that way, because it's just car, 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 car. This time we're we're being joined by Becky Chapin, our Human Resource Director. Good morning. Hello.
How's everybody?
Good.
So I think I'm first for the twenty-eight agreement with Clinton County. We have visited Clinton County and come to a mutual agreement for the interim services of county engineer. We agree on an initial contract of one year, subject to extend at that time based on how the percentages in the split and all of that is going to be. We recommended the one modification that all parties have to give a minimum of thirty days' notice before terminating the agreement. That change has been made in Clinton County, approved this on the fifteenth of August. So I have an original copy here. Unless you have any questions or further conversation, I would ask for motion to approve maybe twenty-eight agreement with Clinton County or County Engineer Services.
Motion and a second. Hi, 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 hi.
So they actually sent one original, and this will actually go back to them, retain a copy, because I'll be the ones that will file it with the Secretary of State's office. And the next item that I had was discussion on compensation for the current assistant to the engineer during the next year or so before his retirement in training current assistant engineer or assistant engineers. We have set the salary for our incoming assistant at ninety thousand, our current assistant to the engineer with his overtime that he's been paid, he has been paid about eighty-two thousand. So he makes about seventy-nine hundred less than what we're going to be incoming. So Todd and I sat down together and thought it would be a viable option to compensate him the difference of that. Broke out per payroll as he's training them. Now with Todd being the interim engineer, whenever he. Um, whenever he feels this person is fully trained, this item will just fall off. You know, if it doesn't take the full year for Mike to, you know, basically sit next to them. Um, so it essentially would amount to three eighty-two an hour. Um, three hundred and five dollars and seventy-seven cents per payroll that Mike would be compensated during the training period. It could be the full twelve, eighteen months before Mike retires, it could be done as soon as Todd feels, um, the assistant is ready to.
Has the Curtis and, uh, uh, engineer approved that, has he agreeable to that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Um. I guess, you know, all of our discussion has been potential of possibly having two for him to trade.
Right.
At this point, we don't know about the second one.
Correct.
So would this be regardless of whether it's only one or if it's two?
Correct. So essentially, it would get him up to the base salary that they were going to make. And what we did was, so Mike's, and Mike's salary minus overtime is less than the eighty-two that he makes, but our assistants are not going to get overtime. So this would keep them all parallel, that they're making essentially the same during the process.
Mike probably wouldn't have the overtime from here on up either.
He may, depending on the project.
On those projects that are going on, given time and how late contractors work, probably, but.
Right, that's true.
Right. I, uh, you know, if you look at the whole picture. Where the job market is, we're fortunate to have a couple of good candidates that we can hire. And we were very fortunate to have Mike for thirty-five years.
Right.
So, I mean, can you compensate him enough, and what is enough, you know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to. Level that playing field, you know, with a guy that has that much experience. Yeah, it's just, I mean, some people's gonna say it's not fair, you know, I mean, it happens in every office, you know. But, uh, it's, it's, it's the times, the way the times are.
Sometime I kinda talked about it, this is definitely a starting point. At least to get him parallel with what we're gonna pay the incoming, so he's an assistant too, he has not agreed, the assistants obviously are, are agreed. But it's gonna take them, you know, some time to get to where they're gonna act independently in that capacity, so. This was kind of the discussion that Todd and I had, um, to present.
Right.
Well, I think it's reasonable.
So you were going to make a motion, is, make a motion to approve?
I would second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion carry.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Now, we have Lisa Smith, Jackson County Auditor.
So this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers.
It'll move second. A motion in a second to approve publishing the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor? Uh, motion carry.
This morning, I handed out to you a second amendment of the twenty-eight Eastern Iowa Mental Health Disability Services Region. Um, I received that from Lynn Volk yesterday, and she wanted me to present it for signatures today. So I would need a motion to approve and authorize the chair and auditor's signatures on the second amendment of the twenty-eight agreement for the Eastern Iowa Mental Health Disability Services Region.
I guess I would ask Jack, is there any major changes, I don't see anything highlighted.
No, no.
It doesn't sound like it, no.
Motion to approve.
I would second.
Motion in a second to approve, all those in favor? Hi, motion carry.
And because of the way that the mental health region now is structured, I also need a motion to approve. The chair signature on the memorandum of understanding for reimbursement from the Eastern Iowa Mental Health Disability Services Region for county employees.
The main reason here is it was going to be quarterly, now it will be monthly.
Yeah.
That they will be reimbursed.
Honestly, we've spent a considerable amount of time discussing how to do this. Because sheriff's transports will be treated differently than. Um, Lynn and Brianna's services and time and, and benefits. So there's been a lot of discussion on how to do this, and, and like Jack said, instead of it being quarterly, they have now gone to a monthly reimbursement.
That would make the carryover a lot more sustainable for less.
Yeah.
And that's a five or ten percent.
The, the region carryover?
Yeah.
Well, it's too high right now.
Well, it's forty-five.
Well, I, at least here, we have to have it down at that level, with the monthly payment set with.
Jackson County receives fifteen thousand dollars every quarter. That was the, um, allocation that was made to Jackson County.
Yeah, and I, I guess I thought it was, um. Probably pretty public knowledge that there would be no mental health levy. But even assessors' office came in last week to talk to me about it to see if we had established the mental health levy yet. And I said, there is no levy for mental health fund, ten disappeared. All of the funds for mental health services is by the state now. And they reimburse us for our expense for Lou, uh, for Lynn or her office staff. And she said, oh. Well, they were trying to put some figures together, I guess, and I said, no, there is no mental health levy.
So it is probably as we're all taxpayers in Jackson County, tax receipts have been mailed out, and as you look at your Jackson County property tax statement. It clearly is on there where there was, um, a year ago, there was money, you'll see that this year there is no money, so there is a line item there on that tax statement saying, you know, zero dollars. Um, I, I don't know why that.
So that levy was about twenty-two or thirty-two?
It was thirty.
Overall, I mean, I can tell you that overall, our county went up nine cents, it looks a little deceiving when you look at your tax bill. But it was a nine cent increase in the county levy.
So, to be honest, for twenty, thirty years, I never paid attention to line items either, but. The public should really look at them line items and see what percentage of your tax dollar is going to the school, is going to.
Hospital.
Yeah, the levies, yeah, yeah, so whatever levies there are, you know, there's five or six different levies there, and they should look at them and see. Where, you know, and somebody approached me yesterday, said, well, my taxes went up, I said. Well, you know, I'll be honest with you, the total levy didn't go up very little. So your property values, I'm sure, went up with the comparable sales. So, I mean, take it into consideration what the value of your property is at this point, you know.
And we're also paying for the jail.
Yeah, this is our second.
Made about a three cent difference.
This is the second year of, of, uh, of the debt levy for the jail.
Twenty-nine cents?
Yeah, you know what, and I speak very publicly about the power of the tax receipt. And I think that people really need to understand that when they come here to pay the tax, their taxes at the treasurer's office. They're paying so much more than, you know, they think that all of this money is going to the county, ours is just a small portion.
Yeah, as long as I'm taking it all going to secondary roads, but they get like seven percent of it, you know, and I'm seriously. We're paying for services, we're paying for EMS, we're paying for fire, we're paying for, yeah, I mean, services that are there for the public, you know.
There is so much that, that, that people just do not understand, you're paying for so much in that receipt. You know, from, like you said, secondary roads, but you know what, even grade level reading that you've supported and, and the county libraries, the rural libraries, and. I mean, if you really break everything down that you're paying for, it's pretty powerful when you think about it. And so, you know what, I'm a taxpayer, my taxes went up, one of the reasons that my taxes went up is, yes, my house was valued more and.
And you cut those trees down.
I can, I know, I don't have any trees and my taxes go up, so it just doesn't make sense to me, but anyway. We did get rid of the fish ponds, though, so, you know.
But you know, but you look at your tax dollars, the amount that you pay, and you look at all of the services that are provided for those dollars. It's pretty minimal.
Well, and, and you take into account, you know, all of the, the county township, you know, you have a township levy, you have a county levy. You know, you're even paying, believe it or not, you're paying for banks and TV, you know, there's a three cent, you know, levy for that. I mean, there's just a lot of things that happen in that tax receipt. It doesn't just stay here, you are paying to educate kids in schools and community colleges and, you know, like you said, you're paying for some EMS. There's just a, a lot of things that are happening with just one tax receipt.
And there's certainly gonna be some individuals that disagree with that, and that's fine.
I get it, I, I get it, we're all taxpayers.
I can, just like everybody else, they're, they're paying more for stuff. We're, we're in that same boat, we pay more for gas and lights and everything, I mean, so it just makes sense to ask the increase with everything else.
Yeah.
So, okay, I lost track.
Okay, so what I was actually asking for then is a motion to approve the chair signature on the memorandum of understanding. For reimbursement from the Eastern Iowa Mental Health Disability Services Region for county employees.
Oh, move. A motion in a second, all those in favor? Hi, hi, motion carry.
Motion needed to approve invoices for thirteen thousand four hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents to hometown plumbing and heating. Twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to Stickley Electric and one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars to S.A. Architects. For a total of twenty-eight thousand sixty-four dollars and thirty cents and authorized chair signature on the project cost recap for the Together We Build project.
Motion to approve.
I would second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carry.
We discussed a little bit last week concerning a potential land purchase, and if it is the board's wishes. Um, Iowa, Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five, Aaron J. Um, does allow for a closed session for you to discuss that if you'd like to do so today.
I, I, I believe that we need to discuss it.
We can either do it now or we can do it at the end of the.
I think we'll do it at the end of the meeting, that's okay.
Yeah, if we're, we're in negotiations, yeah, we start with the.
Yeah.
Closed session until.
Uh, other than that, that's all that I have for the board right now.
Okay. Next up is Luanne Mulkey, our executive assistant.
Yeah, but Together We Built this week.
Pardon?
Yeah, but Together We Built meeting this week.
Wednesday night, if you wanna go, except.
I seen that, I don't see it on here.
It's. It's across the street, right?
It's the twenty-fifth.
At the brewery. I keep waiting to see who, who won our raffle. Thought they were gonna draw at the fair.
Probably.
Did you really?
Not yet.
I was like. The next, the next day after the fair, I came in and I said, Luann. Um, I'm gonna call downstairs and see who won, and I said, I'll bet you anything that Mike Stinas won something. And I called down and, and Janette says, well, I haven't heard who won.
They haven't drawn yet.
I thought, well, they had said they were gonna draw at the fair, but apparently they did not.
Oh.
So, apparently, they're gonna, they said they would announce the winners on Thursday night, so you better go so you can take whatever you win. And, and take your truck. And knowing you, since you had five tickets in there or six, take two trucks. Or a wagon behind you. Yeah, that's right. With that being said, hi, Luann.
Okay, we'll start with the calendar, um, four thirty in the afternoon is Isaac's executive meeting out in Des Moines for Larry. Um, Wednesday, August twenty-fourth is the beginning of the Isaac Annual Conference in Des Moines. And I know that, um, Larry and Jack will be going out to that, that goes through Friday. Nine o'clock tomorrow morning is also an Iris meeting. Um, in Dubuque or by Zoom. And Larry can attend that if he wants, but he will be out in Des Moines, so I think Mike is gonna try to attend that meeting. Seven o'clock Wednesday night is a Jackson County EMS Association meeting in Preston.
That's why I couldn't make that, I don't wanna go into that, because I wanna discuss some of it. That's smart, Michael.
That's Wednesday night.
Together We Build.
Oh, Wednesday night, okay.
I thought Together We Build, I have to look, I thought it was Thursday night.
It is Wednesday, Thursday night, the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So, yes, I will get that to you, information, so.
That's so Mike can guess his truck.
Yeah. Or, or ran a semi.
I gotta tell you, that'd be too raffled, whoever that was from, I'm gonna call that guy, that was the best half of Beef ever had. Yes, kudos to him.
And now you'd have a grill to cook in. Or a cooler to keep it cool. Or a swing to watch it.
Or canoe to kayak.
We don't have.
I have one.
He already won that before. Yeah, we know.
That was a big one. So, that will be Thursday night. And so it sounded like Mike is gonna go to the Together We Build on Thursday night.
My intention.
Your intention, okay. Uh, Monday, August twenty-ninth at seven o'clock is a Jackson County Zoning Commission meeting. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, August thirtieth at nine AM.
There is a Bellevue leadership meeting on Thursday, did we mention that one, did I see that on here?
I don't see it on here, but I think you're correct.
Yeah, I have one on Thursday, is it noon?
It's at noon. That's the new meeting time for that group, so.
Everybody eats lunch and have a meeting.
It was tough on seven o'clock in the morning on school days because we have, you know, we have the principals both there and, yeah.
They moved it to noon, everybody's got a free time at noon, but not much.
The free sandwich, so. Um, the other bit of business I wanna talk about today is the September twenty-seventh meeting. That's a regular meeting day for us, but that is the ribbon cutting for the New Pocket Neighborhood out of the west end town. And because the Debbie Durham, right, is coming from the state, and the only time she can come is nine o'clock in the morning. So we need to move the September twenty-seventh meeting, reschedule it either to that afternoon, which would be fine. Um. The day before, I think, and later in the week is gonna be a problem because it is claims week. So.
I don't know, I was thinking that, um. They think, seem to think that that ribbon cutting is only gonna last an hour to an hour and a half at the most.
Okay.
So if we wanted to start our meeting later in the morning, eleven, eleven o'clock or so, I think we could easily make that. Cause I know there's just gonna be a couple of speakers and a ribbon cutting and, um. I don't know that there'll be a tour, cause all the houses are sold, so I don't know if any of them would be open for people to go through. But I would say within two hours, we're gonna be done. Cause I'm supposed to say a few things and it's gonna be very short.
I would say, I would go along with that, if we could do it at, loving to get done early afternoon, you know, that'd be fine. Bring a lunch.
Need a motion? Answer your motion that we move the meeting from, from nine o'clock to eleven o'clock on the twenty-seventh.
And Luann brings lunch.
Or orders pizza. Or if you, if you win, you bring the grill and we have burgers on the grill.
Yes, it is.
Second. Motion in a second to change our meeting on September twenty-seventh to eleven AM, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi, motion carry.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you very much.
Okay, Marty's at ten, ten. Boards or commissions, uh, as, as, um. Stephanie said, we did have our R C and D meeting last week, and we had quite a discussion about whether we would have it virtually. Or if we would have it face to face, and was kind of the consensus that we would. Maybe try every other month face to face, and the other month not, and in the winter, we would just do Zoom. So, and she really is doing a great job, she really is, she's.
Well, she always has whatever position she was in, you know, so I didn't expect less, but.
And, and Lori is still a member of the R C and D board. Lori Scoville, so she, um, is at the meeting too, and I think that her and, her and Stephanie communicate quite a bit. And so, um. And, uh, last night, we had our, um. ECI meeting, and, um. Roberta Rochine from McCoke, and it was, is a new board member for the ECI. She couldn't be on it as long as she was still teaching, but she's done teaching now. And so she is going to be representing, um, Jackson County as one of our board members for Early Childhood Iowa. And, um. We talked about, um. We provide scholarships to preschool children, and, um. We have about forty-five scholarships that we're presenting or giving out to the schools for kids to be. Chris McLeiman, who is the, um, school nurse for Clinton and Jackson County. She gave us a program yesterday about all of the things that she does, and now she works with the schools. And works with the kids and all of the rules and regulations that she has to follow. And, um, was, it was really interesting, she's really, uh, very capable gal, she really knows her stuff. And workforce, we had a meeting last week, um, down in. And workforce, we had a meeting last week um down in Muscatine and um. Basically, one of the things that they're. At the end of the meeting, one of the things that they discussed is this succession of supervisors who will not be there next year. And um I think there possibly two of us um that won't be and. Both of us are retiring, the other ones are up for election, but they're hoping they're they're still gonna be there. But anyway, um there is a training session December first of this year. Uh and so I don't know if one of you two are considering taking that position on workforce. But if if you are, it would be advantageous, um. I read my mail when I was in here yesterday and Luann had put a a letter together to Phyllis Wood, the. Assistant to um Miranda and said, I do not believe Jack will be coming on December first. That's a month from the time that he'll be leaving and. I don't really think he needs a lot of training on how the workforce development board works. And so, but I had told them at the meeting that uh. If one of you decide you're gonna do it, or if whoever's elected decides they're gonna do it. Um I would suggest that they go to that training session on December first, so we'll see what happens there, but. Other than that, it's um any boards or commissions that you serve on that you met last week?
I did, I met last week with the Holy Trust Fund. Um their projects are coming along real good and on the projects that were submitted. Um we're just about finished with the with the uh. Perfect project, so that's almost completed and all the other owner occupied rehabilitations are really coming along fine, so. That all looks good, um there is a nice percentage of money that's spent in Clinton and Jackson County from that board. So that's, you know, people are applying, they get it and and things are fixed up anyway, so. Um it's a nice program, you know, they their money source have also been diminished a little bit since. Since the last couple years and and the same way for the uh D cap board I had meeting on Friday, so. Um they're coming along just fine, there was some discussion on the mental health step in program that the mental health um. Region was was paying for some of the um counties but not others, so. They're checking into that and seeing why, why, what it was or how they submitted it or what might come about of that, so.
Dan said something to me about that last night at the.
Yeah.
ECI, but um he said, we just have to check and see what's going on.
Yeah, and and they're also concerned about their funding for uh. Twenty-four year, uh year twenty-four, so there's there's quite a bit less funds available, the way it sounds, so. Things may change and we may have some perils, I know we had some funds left over that we submitted to another county that needed, so. And we do that back and forth and it works real good, so. The step in program, really nice program and and grade level reading program was, we all know works well, you know, so. But everything seems to be working pretty good in both of them.
Good. And I'll I'll be really curious to hear the outcome of the Iris meeting tomorrow. Cause of the concerns that people are having about some things that are going on up there with hookups and sort of systems that are.
Yeah, actually, we're checking into that and. It the initial, it made it sound like, you know, people are moving in and they were hooking up to another system. That's not what's happening, it's like they're adding a bathroom in their garage and they're hooking into their system. Or they're putting a an outside hookup, so if they have a motorhome, they can use it as a dump station and stuff. So it's for their own personal use and we've talked between all of us and Leisure Lake Record and stuff too. And that's not an issue, it's. But we think we might have to change the rules or something to make it a little more clear as what's going on. We definitely don't want another person moving in on a different lot and digging the trench.
Hype being, yeah, no.
But that's not what's going on, it's just for their personal use and and that's what, I mean, it's their system, it should be able to use.
Well, that system is there, as long as, to my point is, as long as being paid for.
Yeah.
I mean, the the problem are the areas where their systems and they're usually may not pay more.
Yeah. I guess, Mike, I'm still concerned about that. Meeting that we had and we discussed all of the issues that they had and. There was gonna be action taken, you know, like within the next couple days and my understanding is nothing is happening yet.
Well, and Lori's letter, I think, was the other day, she had she had addressed that somewhat, I think it's a time factor thing, you know. Jump through the hoops and do the process, but. At least it's on their bulletin board to say, you know, we need to uh as a society, we need to address these. If it's businesses that are not complying or whatever it is, you know, so.
Be here next week, so maybe she'll have an update on that as well.
Yeah, we had our conservation meeting last Tuesday night and we have a new employee. Sheila Ruip, taking Pam's position. And from there for twenty-five years, I'm looking at some, they're kind of shadowing each other, look at that, sounds like she's a. Pretty sharp person and welcome her to the board.
Heard they had a lot of good qualified applicants for that, yeah.
Okay, with that, Marty, you can come forward. Marty Hoodlish, Jackson County Maintenance Supervisor.
Morning.
Morning, morning, nice shirt.
Thank you. Things I've done.
So you're mowing the grass.
Huh?
I saw you mowing down the jail.
Yeah, that's that's like a three-hour job trimming and mowing down there. And then you gotta repair the lawnmower. I I. I guess it's just me, but it should have been leveled off, I would have thought, a little bit better than it was left.
I think it's ridiculous the way it looks.
It it is, Jack.
Yeah.
Um.
I can't believe it.
You got, it you gotta watch what you're doing, because there's, I don't know where they come from, but there's gravel that big. In it too, and it's clear out into the grass and everywhere, but anyway, with that being said. I mowed the weeds in the in the lawn at the jail site, I did that a couple times. Um I moved electrical box here for Luann, I think that was hit with something or did or and we moved something or was there always?
Always been here.
Okay, but we moved it down to to hide it. Phil Tabor wanted me to hang a picture of. I won't give. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, uh in the courtroom, so I did that and they're gonna have it unveiling. Here in the next couple weeks, so I hung that. The door opener over here, after checking and checking and checking, I did find a loose wire and it, I got it working. Um I used the hammer drill, which is fairly new, but it. It's like the brushes, something or how it makes when the brushes go out, the sound of me, so I took that to get it fixed. Um back to the place we bought it. Uh worked on the east door, it was not working one day and I figured that out. Excuse me, some apparently somebody bumped it and come off the track, wasn't a big deal, but I did that. Uh mold the drain field up at the care facility, it was getting tall. Um they molded a little bit, but it was probably too tall for the the mower, so I went up and molded with a. Walk behind thing that mows that really good. And then they molded it two or three times since then to make it look good, so we should be good to go there from now on.
Is that fairly smooth then?
Oh.
Is the washouts were good, no?
Yeah, yeah, the and I don't know what them straw things, they're still there and we'll get them out of there. But yeah, it's smooth as smooth can be, it really is. It it had beads in it.
Beads?
Beads, big beads in it when I mowed it. I don't know, the only thing I can think of is they got a big leaf on them, maybe to cover the ground to keep the moisture in, I don't know, but there was. Well, I would think, yeah, but they're they're big ones. Yeah, it was weird, I kept hitting them, I went, what is that? So then I stopped and looked at it and it's got, it's, there's beads all over it and. No.
Maybe pickle beads.
Yeah. Uh let's see. Uh down at the senior citizen operating around the building, there's a bunch of trees growing up that weren't supposed to be there. So I can, so I can, the heat cap building, so I cut all them out, trimmed them all, trimmed the bushes up. Um working on the gutter down there. Um I just went and got scaffolding from secondary roads.
Okay.
That way I can just push it along and and they said if I chain it together so nobody steals it, I can leave it there, so I'm doing that. Um. Uh the uni van out here in the lobby was leaking, so I fixed that. And the treasurer's office come wanted wants a new desk or the one gal in there wants her desk bigger. Cause it's right now, she gotta reach down underneath there and talk to her about the the door or the desk out in the lobby, but I think that may be taken. Uh they're looking for something, so if they find something, we're probably gonna help them. You know, they want something wider and longer on the front, so.
So do you think there's anything in our storage unit that's accompanied?
You know, it's been so long since I've been in there, I I don't know what's in there. I would think there might be something.
Well, I would say that you could check with Shelley to get a key to go into the.
I think it's a combination, I think I got it somewhere.
I would think, go down and look and see what's there and if they want to go with you, take them with you.
Yeah, they want something like that's out there that's curved in there, but um that's.
Don't we all?
Yeah. Another man. That's about it.
It's time to mow the courthouse.
Mow?
Upside here.
Yeah, yeah, I think Mike's gonna do that here.
Okay.
Yeah. Um right now, we're getting ready for school down at the uh.
Head start?
Yes, thank you.
Oh.
Yeah, we uh he did the uh grease trap. Does that? They're horrible, uh did that one there and the senior citizen bill. So. Yeah, it's on his agenda.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you, have a great week.
We'll try.
Good, yourself, good, thank you.
I will be gone in Friday this week.
Good, I will think that.
Okay. Todd and Brian, you can come on up.
Marty, good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
And imagine the possibilities.
So they they were cut down a year ago.
Right.
Yeah, and then I had someone come in and and grind them out, which created fish ponds.
Cause they were perfect trees, right?
Yeah, right, uh no.
Oh, they weren't.
No, no, no.
They look nice.
Well, yeah, and you know what, the roots are coming out of the ground, so the first three trees were bad. And I said, you know, it's gonna look ducky if we keep the rest of them.
And if you figure out how to grow grass and not weed, let me know. It's not easy.
I'm working on it.
You got grass grime?
I do have grass grime.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah.
I know it's no trees to shave it.
I'm watering, I'm telling you, I know all about watering and and how often to move it.
I figured out after.
I got it.
I seeded and did mine. And then we got four inches of rain. Hmm, the best way to do that is to work it up, seed it and put the matting on it. That holds, that is, that just holds and the grass was up in like four days, yeah.
Or you lay eight pallets aside down.
Oh, yeah. As long as it takes.
Two weeks to recover.
Yeah, I'm telling you. That's not, they just regraded that ditch and how the grass is coming up on that already.
Yeah, yeah.
Really took off.
Yeah.
Perfect weather.
Yeah.
Lots of rain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Good morning.
So you wanna talk about the lease?
Coming up.
Well, I I'll just tell you, we kinda had some conversations and I think I mentioned it last week, we're really worried about the setting. I mean, we're really worried that they're gonna come in there and say, this does not work, you can't make this homey and residential. And if that happens, I guess I just want you guys to know, I mean, we, I mean, we would have to be out.
But just hang a few more pictures and have some flowers and.
Thank you for that, Jack, cause that leads into my next point. Uh uh looking at the setting the rules and and again, I know you're not gonna wanna hear this, but we're looking at spending probably twenty to twenty-five thousand. In the facility to do just what you're talking, pictures to make it look pretty, those kinds of things. So with that being the case, then I would ask if you consider the rent going down a little bit and and again, we're we're workable on all this. But I will tell you, just so you understand, like in Duitt, for example. We have houses that are together and they're giving us problems on that already. We just got a bid to just do landscaping to kind of make them look more separate, forty-five thousand dollars. Uh to make it look like they aren't all in one area.
That the fence?
Well, it's basically, it basically is, I mean, they're gonna put up a berm of sorts and and plants and kind of separate it that way and put drainage in. So you can grow grass there, but I mean, it's, we we can't really make the commitment to invest the money until we know how they're going to treat us from a setting standpoint. And you guys probably know this, the frustrating part is you can drive up to Dubuque where they have hundreds of people under one roof. And somehow they will be allowed to continue. And we have fifteen people out here and I think we're gonna get challenged on it. Just because the environment looks institutional and it's it it it's counter to what they want to see going forward.
You wanna add anything to that? Wasn't this out of our control?
Yeah, I mean, they'll, we're anticipating they'll come on site by the by the end of this year. Um to do their full analysis and see where we're at, so. Um I mean.
How how often do they do this?
This is all new, so they they threatened to do this, I think, in two thousand nineteen, so we've had to push back about three years now because everybody's freaking out. Because there's all kinds of places like this that are more institutional in design and looks and things like that. And then it gets down to that situation where so you're gonna move out of this place and that's just gonna sit there and rot, so that's a better solution into providing living opportunities for now. And we've stuck money in the showers and stuff like that, I mean, I think. You you're making it look as nice as you can, but I'm 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 expecting them to say, yeah, you gotta take this to another level. I mean, you have to make this more residential and I'm not exactly sure what that means, then we run into the problems of if you put pictures up and stuff like that, are they gonna get busted? Is somebody gonna grab one? It's a main, you know, you it creates all kinds of other issues. Having said that, what we typically see is you put nice stuff up and our folks like nice stuff like everybody else and they do it. I mean, that's kind of the way it is, so I. There's a certain level of uncertainty and I know when I talked to the executive committee team, they were just, they said, just please communicate that. Out of our control could be done at any time, so. And I didn't look at the lease in particular to see if there's a ninety-day out, but that I I don't really care about the terms, but my thinking would be that we would almost go month to month. Until we know and we can go a year as long as it's a thirty-day out in it and we're all clear about the fact that we can't control any of this, but I. What what do you guys think? What do you have in your mind?
Who really, who's gonna come and look at it?
Well, try to get names and numbers, I think we.
I mean.
What's.
At what level? Somebody from the state?
Yes, yes.
State from the Department of Human Services?
I assume so, yeah, yeah. I mean, they've got their own way, you know how this goes, I mean, we started something new, they'll build up a whole branch over here and that's all they're going to do. And I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing, I think, you know, if it's my son or daughter, I want them living in a quote unquote somewhat normal living environment. That's what I want, having said that.
But who can tell what normal is?
There, there you go, that's.
What is normal?
Well.
It's nor- normal is different to everybody.
Well, how about this, whoever lives there, they're happy, let's leave them alone. Could we do that? We can't, I mean, they literally will come in and say, we don't care that they're happy, this still isn't what we want it to be. Um we're looking at building where we're gonna build a five-bed house here in town for the same kinds of reasons. I mean, our population keeps getting uh older and older. A lot of our houses are not accessible, so for Clark Street, for example, by the Y, that's a nightmare, I mean, we've got five bedrooms that sit upstairs that haven't been used in twenty-five years. Cause it's just not accessible, so we'd like to sell that, build this five-bed house, make it accessible, do it on the slab. Um we would do more of that going forward, can't, you can't make that work right now with the Andrew folks, I mean, there's no way you could do it. So our preference would be to stay in there so long as they, right?
Well, that's a good way to get.
Yes, that's for sure, absolutely.
I mean.
We've got no problems with the environment, to me, it's no different to assistant living.
You know, I mean, they're they're, you know, they have their own space, they have their own rooms, they, you know.
Agreed, different set of rules and and different populations, so they'll treat that differently than they will.
So if you could identify who, who, what. Office or what program or who is coming in here to inspect this? I guess we would like to know, or I would like to know.
Well, and just to get pictures of what acceptable. They won't give them to you. No, they'll they'll tell you it's very, very subjective, they need to come in, that's. And what they send you for what they're looking for, it's so vague.
Yeah.
It it's it's still open for interpretation of whoever they're bringing out at that time. So person A might come and say, nope, this doesn't work, but B might come and say, that's fine, you just don't know. I mean, Larry, you don't think they're gonna send us a set of rules that are clear and black and white that we can just follow?
If you wonder, just over here, it worked really good, you know, you can't see that.
No, yeah, it's kind of a, we we really don't know, we don't. No, yeah, it it's kind of a, we we really don't know. We don't. To that point, the house, the lot we just bought that we're gonna build a house on, the lot is big enough for two houses. We're not gonna go forward with building a second house because we think we're gonna get the same pushback from them there. Why are you putting two houses with people with disabilities right next door? Because there's no other lots in town to buy. That may be sufficient for an argument, but they will not tell you if that's the case right now. We believe as long as we can show that we've done, we've done the work, we've looked for better opportunities that are more spaced out, that's fine. But you go up like Gutenberg and Garnaville, you're in a little small town with seven hundred people. We couldn't put the houses far enough away because there wasn't enough opportunities. So they're all closer than they would like to be. Even in the old days, they wanted the houses a half mile to a mile away from each other. They they've never wanted them congregated. Having said that, that's what ends up happening because it's the most efficient way to deal with this.
So your Duitt thing, I would get some more estimates on different.
Yes.
You know, turn it loose, say, okay, we're looking, you know, maybe a water feature or something while sitting here. And just see where the prices come in.
I agree, I agree. And we and we're we're kinda looking forward to some direction from the settings people and and they may come in and say, you guys are good to go. There's a hundred agencies other than you that are in worse shape than you are. I mean, I don't think we're in bad shape. Other than Andrew, we just converted all of our ICFID homes. So that was a hundred and fifteen beds to waiver. That's exactly what they were targeting. Now, not having that service, I have a hard time believing they're gonna give us a hard time. But until they get here, you know.
So, any idea of who from the Department of Human Services is gonna be somebody that is gonna be dealing with this?
I assume it's waiver, don't you?
It is.
Brian, cause it probably falls under Brian wines. You know Brian, right?
I I know the name.
He's been there forever and uh, I like Ryan real well. But again, you 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 can't get an answer from any of them. Everything's in, and and I I don't even blame them because he's gonna say, I I don't have the rules in front of me. They're still developing.
There should be protocol, there should be. Things that you follow.
There has to be protocol before you start spending a whole bunch of money. But you guys have friends involved and the friends basically dangle that carrot that if you guys don't follow the studies rules, we'll pull your funding.
Then give me the setting rule. Well, then give me the rules that I have to follow. You can't expect me to follow something I don't know.
I do it every day, Mike.
You know where you're going?
No, no.
Going crazy.
It's hard to believe that we get there sometimes, yeah. I get the frustration.
I hear what you're saying and I, you know, like I said, what Jack said, he like to know who and what exactly who's coming. So that we can maybe have some input on this and say, you know, give us what you want and we have a facility.
I would.
We're trying to help.
You know, I would love to ask specific questions at the mental health council or the human service council meeting.
Yeah.
Why is this happening and what's the deal?
Yep. I I honestly, I don't think you can answer it. I think you'll get, well, this is the best thing.
At least they'll know I said it.
I agree.
And we meet the second Thursday of every month.
Well, you're literally gonna bankrupt some organizations if you take a hard line stance and you say you have to make these changes. So I I'd like to think that that, you know, people have years to, don't you think, to make the transition? We're in a position, we can make some quick changes, but a lot of agencies aren't and they can't borrow money and they're, I mean, they're stuck where they're at. And a couple of that with the fact that we have so many providers in them small towns, like we said, where there just isn't, there isn't any other opportunity. We've got a house in Jefferson, Iowa right now. It's a big two-story house. It's not accessible. Just finding a house in Jefferson, Iowa is an act of God and then to find something you can afford and then sell the other, and it's not easy to do. Seems pretty.
Logically, common sense, don't they have to look at the big picture too and say, this is what's available and this is the best we can do to help people? I mean, we're we're, you're in a, you're in a position now, you're helping people.
But I can say that I've been doing this for twenty-two years and we have rates that have been increased in twenty years. So why would you think?
Well, you told me two weeks ago that your rates increased seven percent the last.
Yes, some of the rates did. Some rates have been stagnant since day one. And then I would argue in the race that we got the entries on, that just gets us back to nineteen ninety rates. So, so, I mean, we deal with.
I know that part, but I know you said that the rates increased.
No, they have. They've done really well and and but we're still behind. I mean, we still can't pay our employees what we need to pay them based on the reimbursement. We have, but we're getting closer. The gap's getting close.
So is Andrew Jackson Care Facility, is this a rarity or is there a lot of those across the state of Iowa?
Yeah, so right now there are ten Andrew Jackson cares in the state, okay, because of the RCF PMI part. Their last I saw was still a hundred regular RCFs, a hundred plus. So there's, there's a difference between the two, but there's only ten Andrew Jackson cares in the state. Yeah, that persons with mental illness is what separates that from everything else. And community care used to have them back in the day, but this is really the only one in the area. And it's very specialized, but then the problem with that is in the the funders and the referral folks, they wanna give you the most difficult people. Which is kinda what we're supposed to do, but we can't have people that are violent and trying to hurt people and that kind of thing. But that's what you tend to get when you have chronically mentally ill people. As you guys know.
Have have you talked to Lynn in the last week? Or last week and a half?
No.
You and I and her, and I think that uh. Lori.
Yep.
Wants to zoom in and we need to discuss your request to the mental health um, region.
Gotcha. I I just expected you to reject it. I just expected it to get rejected and that would be the end of it.
Well. I don't think it just got, I I don't think it got rejected because of 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 the the. Procedure we went through with Todd for the peer support group in Duett.
Right.
And I basically said, you know, we have to look at this. Uh, we can't just write it off because of what, you know, we gave him three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
To purchase a home.
Right.
Which now he's gonna sell the motel and anyway, that's neither here nor there.
Right.
But I know that we wanted to discuss with you about it and then I asked Lori if she would please zoom in so that. She would, if she had specific questions other than what we had, we could discuss that.
That'd be great.
So I will, um, I'll talk to Lynn.
Okay.
And we'll set up a time that we can get together.
Perfect. I think that'd be great.
Cause um. I I I guess I'm um, so I get kinda frustrated how Jackson County kinda gets left out.
It does, but I will tell you, the region has been pretty.
Yeah.
Been very supportive of us.
We've tried to do that.
Yeah, Lori's Lori's good and Lynn's good about advocating for it. You know, they gave us a hundred thousand dollar grant for the pet project. So they have been pretty good. And what I like about Lori, when I emailed her, she came right back and said, this is something that I wouldn't support because of this, this and this. But we'll take it and they may disagree with me and I really appreciate just the transparency rather than lead me along and say, no, maybe we'll get it done. I mean, I get it if it doesn't fall within scope.
And the rest of the board members, you know, they said, I think we need additional information.
Okay.
And I said, well, we will be happy to meet with Todd and bring back some kind of report to the board.
And you guys know it's basically four fifty to build a two thousand square foot house right now. Rent, that's on a slab. That's on a slab.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's just getting on hand and we typically wouldn't be able to do this from a financial standpoint, but frankly, we're gonna take the Clark Street and we're gonna sell that. Proceeds towards this, which will make it more affordable. I'm not sure it's as smart a business decision, but I think from a mission standpoint. We have to do it to provide some quality accessible housing for folks to serve.
Well, um, with that being said, I guess we're still talking about the lease.
Yes.
First, I was gonna ask for an increase, but you told me.
I knew you would.
You said you were getting seven percent. I figured out, what is seven percent on this was, was that seven times seven?
I'm trying to preempt that.
You're trying to forget that you shouldn't have said that. But anyway, otherwise I would, I would think that we keep moving like we are and of course, find out what happens or what comes forward. Um, again, find out what your expenses are maybe and maybe we can talk about something like that.
Yeah. I don't think we wanna tie ourselves down or you.
Right.
Until we know what's gonna happen.
Right.
And that may be next week, it may be a year from now. But um.
So the question that I asked Sarah is how long can we go month to month?
The way the lease says is that as long as they keep paying, paying and we keep accepting it, it's a month.
Automatic.
So what what does it say about termination? I mean, either side.
Thirty or ninety?
I think it's ninety.
I'm thinking ninety.
And frankly, ninety days should be enough. I have to believe they give us. Gotta like, they could give us.
Yep, ninety days.
Yeah, transition.
I mean, I'd like to sign a yearly lease anyway.
So whose responsibility is it if they shut you down? I mean, you said you have fifteen people there?
Yeah.
I mean, you have a place for fifty, I mean, I'm like.
Not with us, we don't. So then that's when the managed carriers supposedly would get involved and they have case managers and they would try to go up and place those folks. And then what happens, just to be real about it, is you'll have, a lot of those people will not be placed in the same service. They'll go into a less restrictive service. And then they'll end up in the hospital for weeks and weeks on end because of the transition. Or it'll be one of those things to where we have to keep people there until everybody's out and some, sometimes that can take a year. It can take a year and a half. I mean, you just don't know. So you might have two people in the building, but you still have to staff it. I mean, just, so if we do an involuntary discharge on someone, which means they have thirty days that we can kick them out. We have people that are with us a year and a half after we serve them with that notice. Because we still have a responsibility to find a stable alternative treatment place for them and you can't know who's gonna take somebody that we're saying is violent or whatever the case is.
Absolutely.
So you're.
I mean.
You're really stuck.
Those that you have there are the most difficult to place.
Yeah.
And you'd think that Department of Human Service would realize that.
Well, they're getting some more managed cares in here, Jack, so that'll.
Oh, yeah, that's for sure.
More administrative support.
Seems kinda goofy, doesn't it?
When I tell people that aren't in this field and we talk for about a half hour, they they kinda look at you like, well, you can't be right. There's no way that that any of that stuff could be true. And I wanna say, let's let's take you back and show you.
But we need a picture on the wall.
Right, yeah, that's.
Whisker, don't forget the candles, be excited.
Right. That you can't nail down enough.
Right.
To be removed.
But then, but then I couldn't do that because DIA tells us we can't.
So they might trip over the footstool.
So we're competing, we got the two different entities to try to get around. Area rugs. That'd be a great example of making everything look homey, but now we've got OSHA, we got trip hazards, we got a safety committee and they're saying. That would be the easiest thing to do, put a bunch of nice colorful, you know, rugs all over, but you can't, you can't do anything that makes sense.
So we did a project once and they had a lower section in the basement and there, I don't think there's hardly any windows at all. We dropped that, we recessed the wall out, we put a wall mural of the Grand Canyon. And we put a rough railing around it. And you walk down the basement, it's like you're sitting on top of the rim. It's like, that really works.
Right. Anything creative, anything that makes it feel less institutional, that's really what they're striving for. And again, we don't have people complaining coming up to us and saying, I don't wanna live here because this is institutional. And I guarantee you, after we fix it up, they're not gonna say, I love living here because the pictures look nice. It it makes, it makes no difference to any of the people living there, but we gotta play.
Rather than hang pictures, maybe you just need to have somebody.
And where does it all start or where does it end? Does it start, end with legislation somewhere? Could somebody enact this? So this is a.
It's all federal. But again, this started in two thousand nineteen.
But you've gotta have parameters to follow.
But that's why you've had it pushed back three years is because every time they put a date of implementation in, providers like us start going crazy and saying, we don't even have rules yet. But but look at your Congress, they're signing bills every day that they haven't read the the bill. So why does this surprise you? I mean, this is the world we live in, right?
It doesn't.
We just come out.
And you ask a legislator about anything dealing with mentally ill and they can't tell you. They have no idea what they're talking about.
I'm gonna stay out of politics.
So, I mean, I guess if it's under agreement, we can proceed with the.
Keep it where it's at. We've got the ninety day out. We'll come back to you as soon as we have any kind of definitive answer on setting the rules. And then what I would ask of you is let's say that you come back and they do give us a list of that you're gonna have to do A, B, C, and D, which I'm not sure they will. And we get estimates on it. I thought I heard you guys say we can have that conversation. If we're not gonna lower the rent, maybe we can share in that cost or something. I I feel confident you'll work with us. Is that fair?
We always have.
I, you have, that's why I'm, yeah, I think that'd be fine. Otherwise, we just kinda status quo. And I would anticipate November, December is when we see them.
Okay, well, if you, if you happen to know that, it'd be nice to know when they are coming in, so we can kinda.
Maybe we'll get a name by then.
Yeah. Well, you know what I mean. I mean, there's something if we can. If anybody can make a phone call or just have a conversation with somebody, maybe it, maybe it helps, maybe it makes it worse. I don't know.
Ask Lynn too, I'm curious to know her thought is on the setting. Ask Lynn about it too. I'm not sure how intimately she's involved with the whole thing and her position, but I I. And again, I I don't think you can find anybody that says, it's 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 overall stupid. I get the premise, I understand what we're striving for. I just think there becomes a practicality and a functionability to it that has to be considered and that's where they they don't seem to consider those kinds of things.
Well, when they were talking about the 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 house. And, you know, I, we we were just talking about a bunch of different stuff and I said, well, you know, we have an empty wing out there. I said, we could easily house fifteen people in that empty wing, but they won't let us. So you're telling, you're complaining about not having enough room for these people, but yet we have a half a facility that's setting up that you won't let us use.
And the other part of the study, this will be the last thing I'll say about all this, but but what's not considered is. That environment out there, they won't give credit for it, but if I'm a person with mental illness and I'm stressed and I can go outside in a nice country environment and I can take. There's more benefit to that from my perspective.
Go looking outside at a brick wall or.
I agree. Having said that, I'm not sure they'll take that consideration, but that would be the kind of thing we would advocate.
Well, it's a setting that's peaceful.
Yes.
Rule, nothing happening with.
Yes.
Somebody mowing grass or plowing the field, you know.
Very tranquil. Yeah, I agree.
Or maybe even having a like a walk trail designated around the area, that would be.
Yep, absolutely.
Good way to spend some money. Kinda, you know, some benches or somewhere to sit.
They have benches there.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we can do things. It's just whether or not it meets the criteria and criteria is what we don't know.
So I guess so long as we have the ninety day out anyway, we can do the yearly lease, I would guess.
I mean. As is until you know more.
You guys, you guys can do what you want there. I'll sign it if you wanna make an amendment. Otherwise, it sounds like we can leave it as this go month to month and just address it.
I think that's the only option we have right now.
As always, appreciate the support. I know.
There's anybody I can talk to from Department of Human Services. I'm not afraid to talk.
Organization, yeah, some kinda, if if that's who it is.
You know, I'm serious.
No, I I'm I'm with you. I just, I. I mean, we're on calls all the time where people are trying to clarify this. I'm on a call with this Matty every Wednesday morning and there's questions. And well, we're still trying to figure that out. And when you come out and ask those folks flat out, can we have an RCF PMI like this? Well, until they get out and then look at, when they come out and look at, well, the plan is, and then we get in, I mean, everything is a six month deal. And it's hard to really do any strategic planning when you're constantly waiting for an answer to know if you can go forward over here, over there. Yeah, you know, that's not feasible to me. That's just not.
It's not practical, it's not fair. Hey, you wanna stay?
Least of all question. I mean, you almost have to go to the top.
Well, I wouldn't have a bit of trouble talking.
Yeah, yeah. To, because she has no idea what's going on here. She's taking it from someone else.
And they have the the mental health division among it in with the Department of.
Sure.
But um, she's not in charge of that.
Somebody else is in charge of the mental health.
She's in charge of the whole picture. So. Okay.
So my question was on. Screw's Creek, well, thanks. Have you been able to do any more with that agreement of any sorts?
I have not had time to look into. The issue is, is Kim really had told me at one time that. If you are within two hundred feet of a public water supply, you're required to hook up. I need to find out where that requirement's coming from. I was under the impression from her that it was state. You indicated to me the other day, you thought it was local. So that's what I have not had time to look into. Because obviously if it's state, that creates an issue because they're clearly gonna be within two hundred feet of this public water supply.
I think it's local. I think we we passed that. Four or five years ago.
So who do you think we passed it means? Did you?
It had to go to a public health. Right?
It was something, um, right?
So this Elizabeth thing. You have not talked to this before.
Um, I did talk to her about whether or not she had, to clarify, to verify that she had tested the five wells and she said she wasn't sure which five properties. Um, we were referring to and she has not tested all of the wells, so she could not say.
And I know she's done two and they were okay. To me, that makes complete logical if these guys, I mean, the total argument with that we went to up at that meeting was. Mine, mine's perfectly legal. These five are perfectly legal and fine. Okay, then don't hook up to the system. You have to hook up to the system at some time. It's all your baby, it's all your expense. You either hook up to now, or they don't want to pay the water to wash your car or boat, I understand that. I didn't need it when I lived in town, but I did, you know. But and if they've got their own well, that's legal, I understand that side of it too, but.
I believe that one of the five called me yesterday. So I guess just get me get me kind of caught up, Larry, if you would. How what's the project? I mean, how soon are we gonna start this project?
We started about eight years ago.
But I'm saying.
And this is what we we keep running in metro blocks, and this would be a way to fix that. We got five people staying held up. But we need to do something, we need to address that.
They all got assigned, so they're not finding it either, till they get clarification that they can keep their well.
Okay, so let me just, so I understand. So Iris actually been drafted and sent to them? She's not, I'm gonna say yes, because she said that they received theirs and she forwarded it on to her attorney. There was something she forwarded was gonna forward on to attorney. So if I understand right, Bellevue was going to supply the water to this point, right? And at this point, Iris is gonna buy the water from the city at one and a half times the rate.
Yes.
Okay, so from this point on, Iris then is going to sell the water or get reimbursed for the water. And who's gonna be do doing all of the billing then? Then this is an ECI slash Iris thing that's gonna be doing all of the billing and the collections?
I think they're working with Bellevue to add it to their electric and.
So it would go to the city.
Yeah, the cable. Normally Iris does the billing, but it sounds like Bellevue would take that on.
Just not good. At one time, they talked about meter at all, but it's gonna be metered at each each residence. So then, now the other argument is. Uh, you're gonna run water to the campground. Why are they not paying for X amount of dollars of this project?
But they will.
Well, they get paid, they'll get paid for usage. But if they've got seventy-five campgrounds down there. How much percentage are they paying according to what everybody else thinks? I guess that's what I took out of it.
That's not been determined yet.
So.
Will be on, will be on one meter though.
Sure, I understand.
So this this lady says my my, everything is is new. She said, why would I camp a brand new well? She said, my water's good, my set, I mean, that was her, that was the discussion that I had with her and I said, I.
They're in compliance, yeah, that's the whole discussion.
That's what I'm trying to get at through here is that, you know, she can opt out of it. But we still want an easement across our property, you know, the water line there.
So when it first come about years ago, USDA was gonna supply or give Bellevue a million dollars. To put this system in. So then, at that time, it was USDA and Bellevue saying, it's all or nobody. That's why it come.
Oh, I see.
That's how, that's how it first come.
Okay.
If I am understanding it right, years, two years ago or three years ago, they had this engineered two or three times already. But but when Bellevue was gonna do it and they were gonna supply the water, and it wasn't going through IRS, but USDA was gonna give Bellevue a million dollars. They were gonna put the system in, collect their water bill, it was all Bellevue's baby, basically they were getting a million dollar. But they're saying, you're not cross contaminating, you know how in no way, it's everybody and nobody and yours is shut off and capped and.
Look, so Bellevue absolutely will not let you have a well if you are hooked up to the city water. So that's where it came up with, if you're keeping your well, you're not getting city water. And if you ever want city water, you need to cap that well. Because the cross contamination.
So then when it comes to.
And that's not an issue unless somebody digs a a trench at night and hooks up. You know, then all of a sudden we contaminate the whole town.
Yeah, I get it. Okay, so so then we're not treating the Dressler's slash Screw's Creek. This water system, the same as we're doing Leisure Lake, or we are?
We like the sewer system.
I know that, but what I'm saying, the billing and such and the delinquency. So that's the question. And do we have an agreement yet? Because I looked at the. Yesterday, we looked at, huh? We looked at the user agreement and it says that we have an agreement and I'm like. Are you trying to use the same agreement that you use for Leisure Lake? Or are you drafting a new agreement?
Should be a new one.
Have you, has that been brought forward to the county yet?
I'm not sure where that's at.
Okay. I don't think you've seen it.
I don't remember seeing it.
Okay. Okay, cuz that's what we were looking for it yesterday and I don't think it exists. But I just wanted to make sure, cuz it does specifically talk about what Jackson County is going to do and I don't believe you as a board have. Have you? No, okay.
They haven't talked about really any of it, you know, what's going through Iris and and. Larry's our representative and it's going through the attorney that's coming up with the contracts and easement agreements.
Well, I just want to make sure.
How do you get? A hundred people or ninety people, owners, landowners, together and have them all pass? You go door to door, do you have a big meeting and get most of them that you can and then go to the door, you know, everybody's gotta sign that.
And then just to make things even worse, a bunch of them went together. And paid to have a new blacktop street put in, which is right where the water line was.
Right down the middle of the tree. I knew this was coming, you know, knew they knew it was in the works, but, you know, they wanted their street, so they paid for it.
And there's the other issue, the actual where the streets at, their lot pins are not the center of the street. The street actually belongs to. Association, I think. And who's gonna sign that easement? I is this just?
Lot of.
Sounds like a nightmare. Well, it's one of them projects, you know, when that subdivision was built, it was. All these rules and regulations are not in place. And and the lots were smaller, it was a big. Weekend have cabin and yeah. Now there's five hundred dollars on our cabins.
Okay, well, I feel better, at least I'm a little caught up.
One of the other things that's happening is another housing thing, they're sectioned up. Eight or nine miles.
Yes.
On the south side, yeah, okay. We're okay with that as long as they hook to the city water.
Oh, he wants to. Okay, he's he's.
That's the seven lots.
Because they were kind of reluctant to okay some building things on there and really they're big enough, they're big enough for septic systems. But with the water issue, you know, if you do the water thing, that's fine, so he definitely wants. That part is going ahead. I don't know if that's included in the plans yet and he needs to get an agreement. With Iris to put that line in too, so.
Okay, all right. Okay. I can, yeah.
Oh, are we complete? Was there a meeting here?
Yep. Well.
For the closed session.
Yeah. This time the recess. And um, we are going to go into closed session according to um. Twenty-six. Twenty-one point five J. Oh, so. I guess I needed to get my sheet out. Um, to discuss possible purchase of land. Doing a motion to go into closed session.
Cause I thought you just took this.
You have to vote to go in. All those in favor? I wish and carry. At this time, we reconvene the meeting of the Jackson County supervisors, we were in closed session, we discussed. Potential purchase of property and the board has um, decided not to take any action on that request. Until we get some additional information.
So before we adjourn, I know we've had on the docket or we still have on our discussion list here further. That was tabled is our office space. Week. Gentleman IT gentleman's not coming that day yet.
And so what did he tell you? Anything?
You will give us numbers of what it was possibly wearing down there, um, as far as the state equipment, he said. Can it be done? Yes, but we still have to rewire, I think he said at least four lines, so.
Just to move it to the corner. And what did he think about ventilation, whatever for that thing? Is there heat?
I don't think that'd be an issue, okay.
Well, I think somehow we need to keep more moving forward on that and I would like to thought that we can use both offices, I. I think we need both them offices. To me, maybe Sarah, you can tell me better. I think there's plenty of room for the judicial system. Up beyond or in the district court, if they want to save that district courtroom. Magistrate, I don't know.
I think you really want to keep the magistrate courtroom for use. Just for safety purposes, because that is where ninety percent of your your prosa people are. And if you were to put it back in that back courtroom, that means that your security person's gonna be back there. For the entire time, rather than being able to be in a kiosk and be able to monitor.
So we have uh, another security, add another security person at any given time for that, for that part of it, but.
So what you're saying, Mike, is you think we need the juvenile probation office and the office where the computer.
Boxes, is judges chambers, is that what you call it?
Yeah.
I do, I think we need both them rooms.
And then where are you gonna put the juvenile probation officer?
That's going back, well, their suggestion was to put it in Becky's old office and add a door going to your office for.
So the door never, I mean, it's just. There's no door there, there's doorway. I don't know where.
We still got the door.
Yeah, we still.
Yeah, there's just like insulation.
Oh.
In in between the door.
Well, he never took the jam out or anything.
So he could just run through real fast.
There's, it's posted on there pretty good, you have to rip that off first and then, so would you be opposed to that? Um, I, the only issue is that if that door, when that door was there, I can hear everything. And he can hear everything online.
Yeah.
So again, juvenile probation, could they not use one of them back offices or is that a security issue also?
I'll probably say it's a security issue.
Well, they got a lot of room.
I don't know the security issue so much as, I mean, they do have things that they need to be able to um, lock up. As opposed to the way those offices are there, I don't even know if they have locks on the doors. Like the second chambers and whatnot, and they do get used, we do occasionally have two judges here.
Well, that was their suggestion anyway, so I'd be I'd be I would be in favor of that, but that's again, if that's not gonna work. Of course, you have an extra door in between, no you don't, not between yours and that one. I was thinking that went into the kitchen area, but there's no way to put a door from. Becky's old lounge into the lounge or to your lounge area. So where you keep your cookies and goodies.
You would have to put a new door in. There is no, the only way to get to that room is through the main area where Jesse sits.
Yeah.
Which is where our files are kept.
To me would be more geological. Is that accessible to leave it to that room to Becky's room?
No.
No?
What's in between there, is there not? I mean, you can probably cut a doorway in there, but that would be.
To to me, that would be the place to put the door instead of go directly into your office.
Yes.
So what happens down where they're at now?
There's a back door into the chambers.
Yeah, but if they move out. Or no, I mean, I mean, where Elizabeth and. Warrior.
Yeah, I don't know what their back door is, cuz they have the same issue between. Yeah, that's also probably very similar.
They don't have a backup.
Oh, what, I mean, if we move them to the other two rooms, what happens to that?
Elizabeth stays in there.
Oh, she's gonna stay there. Okay, that makes sense, alright. We're about to, well, no, it was just gonna stay there, it's gonna say maybe move the break room down there and then have the other one up.
I don't think you want to move that back.
And 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 I guess, Mike, why do you not think that there's room in Elizabeth's office for two people? If one of them is the secretary or receptionist.
I I don't, I think there's room for two there as long as. It's not a noise factor thing, I thought that's what the problem was now, is one is too loud when both phone, they're both on the phone, I thought that was the issue.
Well, I think. That might be the i- issue now, when one's zoning administrator and one is, you know, health. But if it's just a secretary at one of the desks that's answering the phone and serving as a receptionist. I wouldn't think that would be a problem if one was in, if one of, let's say Lori is in the juvenile probation office. And Elizabeth is in where she is now, and at the front, we have a desk for the receptionist.
With a partition or something.
Yeah.
I don't have an issue with that, if you think the receptionist is close enough to Lori per se, does she have?
You just moved Elizabeth to the juvenile probation office, and I know that she doesn't want to move. But let's just, let's just give that, if you just move Elizabeth to the juvenile probation office, the juvenile probation officer goes up to. That small room that used to be Becky's and the future. Secretary and Lori stay in the current location. You don't need the magistrate. Office or whatever that middle, whatever you call.
Yeah, where the computer thing is. Could they use that for juvenile probation?
Yeah.
Because the office.
Yeah, so then.
That makes sense. Does, is the is the receptionist al- also going to be a receptionist for public health?
Yeah.
Both?
Yeah.
So just basically answer the phone, do do the duties that that's required or was needed over.
And whatever, whatever, maybe typing or whatever they might have to do, hand out forms and. So then you'd only. You'd need some wiring in the juvenile probation office from state to county. You would do nothing in the. Judges' office, because that still would be state. And Elizabeth. Is fine. The old, the current zoning slash health office. That would stay at county office.
Add a full line, I mean, not a physical line, but program.
Yeah, right.
Well, whatever.
Impact.
Yeah, whatever we need to update, we need to, because I mean, we're not going backwards in the court.
Well, I think if you if you leave Elizabeth where she's at, put the secretary in there, have Lori move over to the juvenile probation office. We have. But it's Lori that wants the secretary, not Elizabeth. Well, she'd be working with Lori. But I think you need the secretary and Lori at the same, to to maximize the effect, I believe that you need Lori. And the secretary together, cuz Elizabeth doesn't necessarily want.
But she doesn't also, doesn't want to move.
Well, I know that.
Um.
But that.
Well, that's not up to her, she said she'd move, that's not an issue, that's, I mean, that's, it is what it is, I mean, and then, yeah.
But you gotta put the secretary and Lori together.
I just think that she has a good working relationship with Becky's, when she leaves, Becky knows she leaves and they're. And they got coordination so that they know when type she's supposed to be back, so. I mean, yeah, unless you put. A tracker on the phone, yeah, it does. To me, it doesn't matter, either one of them, I mean, maybe we talk to them three and say, what's your best scenario here?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, it's, it doesn't involve me, so that, this is just a. I think we should ask the two of them to decide which ones wants to move. Yeah, no, I agree, I mean, I. And then whichever one it is. They move and.
Yeah.
But they don't wanna.
That's not issue, wants too loud.
The issue is that they're they're busy enough that they, when one's got somebody in there, the other one can't really do all of their work because they're lit.
It's the phone call issue, if we're both on the phone at the same time, I'm trying to talk louder to you so I can hear. It's like doing an auction when the whole crowd is talking, you can't hear.
Well, do we have one of them come down and say, you know, this is what you gotta do? It doesn't matter to me, I mean.
I I think we can each individually talk to all. To our both of them and and see what our thoughts and come back and give our thoughts to everyone and see if we can come to an agreement. I don't think we need to have them all down here at the same time, I think we can just talk.
Whatever, okay. We certainly can, I mean, it it doesn't matter to me, I'm just, how soon do you want this resolved and?
But I'm sure we're not gonna get any numbers from anybody real fast. I mean, obviously judicial system dragging their feet.
Well, if they, if they don't have to move their box, it should be almost nothing for them. Except juvenile probation.
Oh, if you move.
And if he moves in, if if they move him. And if he moves in, if if they move him into where the box is. Then I wouldn't think that should be a big problem. They use that bill room, you know, the magistrate office. We need to call that.
The judge's chambers?
Is that what that is?
It's magistrate chambers.
Okay, so how often do they use magistrate chambers?
Tuesdays and Thursdays. But it's not like she's, she sits on the bench. She doesn't go in there. The only time would be like if we've got a defendant and their attorney wanting to talk in the courtroom, which a lot of times is if they're in custody, cause they can't just go out in the hallway.
So, okay.
Then she will go in there, so she's not part of it, but she could step out and go hallway too.
So how often is the junior junior probation of?
I couldn't tell you how often.
I don't.
Because it depends on how many he has on probation.
Did you say twice a a week or twice a month or? Yeah, we've looked at his swipes. We'll have him come when there's not.
If we did that, we'd have to add a phone to the magistrate court.
Yes, cause there isn't one in there now.
Move that computer box down in the basement.
We're not moving it.
That would, you would have that.
All right.
Yeah, that you would have to rewire everything. Yeah, you could leave it in that office.
Yeah, but there's room in that office right now for a desk and a chair. True. And usually ju- I'm sure he just has one client at a time.
Or or a client apparent. Yeah, there's.
I'd have them in that middle room, judges' chambers or whatever in the, you wanna call it and use the other office for whichever one decides they wanna move.
We'll have the conversation with them, I guess.
Okay. So you know what you need to do um for your ordinance and get some figures for us? Okay, is there any other business to come before the meeting today?
Oh, no, I guess we talked a little bit about the designated funds that we talked, you know, but that's not set in stone. That thing can be changed after what our attorney wants it needs.
I had another phone call yesterday concerning that and I said, those funds. This is, these are just estimates. They're projects that you guys have talked about, but nothing is set in stone and everything is subject to change of the funds that haven't been allocated, you know, already. So I I said, I don't have the authority and this person needs to come before the board to talk about it.
Okay, if there's no further burdens, I'd make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Hi.
I wish and carry.